Good evening. I'd like to open up this evening's session with a work session. But before we begin, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Heinz.
Here.
Commissioner Grissom.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Better.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
So tonight, we're going to have the presentation of the 2023 budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. So this evening, we're going to talk about the 2023 budget. And before we talk about the budget, I wanted to go back to last year when we were in budget hearings and trying to figure out what our financial position was. There wasn't a lot of clarity in terms of how do you take the budget and understand how the budget influences all the things that we do in the community. So I thought tonight I would start by understanding some metrics in comparison to a few other communities. So what you see before you is three charts, and they depict the city of Pickwa, the city of Centerville, and the city of Troy. And to give you an understanding about available free cash to do projects that would be funded by the general fund, if you look at our population of 20,442, it's really interesting that in 1970, our census was 21,741. So we've remained essentially flat over the last 50 years. What that means is without growth and without businesses, we don't generate income tax. Even though it's a small portion of property tax, we're not increasing our revenues to match what the desires of the public are with improvements in placemaking. If you look at the city of Centerville, their population's 24,729, and their median home house income is $72,342. So that disparity of 20-some, $28,000 generates for them $10 million extra in the general fund that they're holding in their unassigned balance. So that gives them cash to do projects year over year, or to enable that as to be a cash reserve. If you look at the city of Troy, they have 26,432 residents, so they're 6,000-ish ahead of us with a median home income of $61,216. But they have a lot of industry as well. And so if you look at what they're able to hold in unassigned fund balance in the general fund for 2021, it was $35 million, or essentially 15 more dollars, 15 million more dollars than what we had in total general fund revenues. So the story I'm trying to show here is that growth is really important to any community. And as we aspire to do these things that are supported by the general fund, we're going to need to really take a look at how we entice businesses to come here. How do we increase the housing product that we have? And all different from, you know, affordable housing all the way up to executive-level housing. All of those things are very important to give us the available cash that we need to do placemaking, have better parks, have events, banner programs, streetscape, all of the enhancements that a community gets, that all resides from the general fund. And so, you know, when you observe the rest of the budget, anything that's in an enterprise fund doesn't have an opportunity to contribute to those kinds of placemaking items that are really critical to a community. So I just wanted to focus on our limitations, you know, and have everybody understand that, you know, when you look at our available, unassigned available balance, it's been around $8 million roughly between six and eight. And if you look at Centerville, they're running about 24. And similarly with Troy. So, you know, they're at 3X what we are. And it's not to say they're a better community, but what it really results in is the fact that because they've stimulated in growth in their communities, that they have the availability of that cash to do those things, or even to support debt service to get projects done. Outside of that, the operating and maintenance budget has not really changed year over year since I've been here. I think we're doing a better job of decoding the matrix of all of what the budget is. If you look at, you know, this budget, who wants to read this, right? So this is our first iteration with our new finance director and definitely with the help of Stacy to really try to make the budget digestible by anybody. And so this is our first move into going to zero-based or outcome-based budgeting next year, which will even be more transparent to understand, you know, when you invest in certain resources for programming or operations, what does that result look like and what kind of KPI do you get from it? So we're looking at the cost benefit and really trying to use our resources and execute the plan that you guys are after. That being said, it's on to the next slide. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you, City Commission members, for this opportunity this evening to give you an overview of our proposed 2023 budget. As we gather each year, the most difficult and most important policy document in city government, in our opinion, and finances, the budget, that converts our values into investments, our goals into plans with dollars attached of what we can do for the city. This is the first budget that I have presented to Commission, and I want to thank you for the continued stewardship of our community and know that this proposed budget continues some of the basic commitments that I believe we all share. As we begin this budget, I hope you'll join me and express our thanks to some outstanding people of our city government, from our frontline staff to department heads who labor diligently every day to keep Pickwa functioning and thriving. I want to thank as well the community members who participate in the budget process, whether that's through boards and commissions, through comments directly to administration, or through general questions to our finance department. In particular, let me personally thank Stacy Burton. Her dedication to the finance department has been outstanding since I've come on board. Her understanding of the city and its finances are top-notch. I'm sure you all are aware. She took on the budget this year without the blink of an eye, and it made the process for the department heads and myself that much easier. Moving throughout the presentation this evening, I will ask that each department head, if they have some specifics when we get to their departments and our funds, to step up and go more in-depth and help answer questions for their specifics. But let's jump into our fiscal overview. We have become adept to understanding our lovely fiscal bubbles, that we like to call them. So this first slide shows what we anticipate you all to approve and/or make changes to for the 2023 budget at $113 million. Now, as a side note, a reminder that the appropriation is just the overall budgeted amount in terms of dollars, transfers, internal service funds, things of that nature. It's an overall picture. Looking at the next slide, sorry. It is 90.7 million is what our anticipated budgeted amount is. That is what will be spent through all of our departments outside of our transfers, debt services, and things of that nature. On Slide four, you're seeing an overview of how things are broke down into percentages for labor, operating and maintenance, purchase power, capital, and debt. Just kind of giving you a portion of what things are going to as a city overall for that $90 million budget. Looking at some of these enterprise funds, we wanted to kind of give a year-over-year in the presentation. We have what's budgeted for 2023 and what is budgeted for 2022 with a percent change. Of course, with economic, whether you want to say downturn or instabilities in some areas, that will allow for some of the inflation variances. But this is where I will start to allow department heads to talk very specific about their funds. Let's start with you, Ed.
Heard something.
I heard something. Go ahead and talk.
Try again. Yeah, there we go. Now we're better.
All right. So as far as the 2023 budget for the power system, the lion's share of the budget is every year's power supply. 75% of our budget is related to the power bill we have for mail. A lot of things going on with inflation over the last few years. Natural gas prices, we're all aware of the natural gas feature house, and it's driving the increase in higher power loss. One of our large assets that we're part of is the natural gas supply side of the plants, and we're impacted by that. We're also impacted by the market. We have generating units that are producing, providing power from the market, the price of power in the markets, and there's probably high natural gas prices. So the biggest share of our increase from last year, about four and a half, $5 million overall increase. Over $3 million that has increased power supply costs. And that's a pass-through that we do through our power customers. One of the other large items that's in our O&amp;M budget is $1 million we've budgeted for our plant one-day removal. And we have the legacy of Dome Bridge left over from the Dome. And their under, demolition is underway right now. And unfortunately, that's our assets, and we have to address some assets. So I think it makes a lot of sense we started the bike path, the new bridge, the bike path. So it's a good opportunity for Ed to take care of that, move that asset. The bridge has actually been closed down for a while, so I think our intent would be to keep it closed and then go ahead and remove it actually. So $1 million in the budget total for that. We're hoping to get at least a half that recovered through grants associated with our plan to handle it in the future. You've heard of the capital discussion, the budget of $500,000 to upgrade the grid, all 2,000 of the controls on our gas turbines. Those are important assets to help keep our customers. We're going to complete the LED, streetlight LED deconversion process next year. I'll budget $300,000 to complete that. We've got all but not 150 lights replaced that we targeted for this year's budget. One other item that's going to include, influence the budget positively for the power system, brought to commission, the transmission asset sale, taking up transmission. One of the two big ones, that getting into the light control balance. And then finally, just one other comment outside of electric, working with RJ and his staff, Kevin, utilities, internal utility business office. There's obviously not anything going on there. And I just want to make note that RJ, I said, will be a tech full-time employee and for operating the utility business office for six more months. AMI system has been up and running since early this year. You're all aware of NISC, CISC, the work of this company. So that's pretty exciting as well. So, any other questions on your line?
Did I understand? Did you say that in the budget for '23, we will complete the street light project?
That's correct. We operate and maintain over 3,000 streetlights. And it's been a long way, so it should be a great thing. Reduces, you know, no one pays for the energy in streetlights, but everyone pays for it in the loss. We reduce the losses down in the whole business of our network. The other great thing is these things are basically making this free. They're always up to the other place.
And of course, the park system lighting and other lighting that the power system picks up is included in there as well.
So there's also security lighting, which we're going to address that as well. So our intent is by the end of next year that all the older technology lighting fixtures will be taken care of. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Hello, I'm here to talk to you about the water fund. That chart up there doesn't do anything, doesn't do us too much justice. It's an estimate for 2022's budget and an estimate for 2023. What I'd like you to pay attention to is this big, nice-colored printout that I like to do, the 11 by 17, the one that says "Water Fund", and on the back is "Sewer Fund". So this gives the last three years, month by month, what we're spending on our four major, what I say, four major units. Labor and benefits, other O&amp;M maintenance, operations and maintenance, chemicals, and utility. And as you can see, the labor, other O&amp;M, and utilities have gone down over the last three years slightly. But you've got to think about it, too. With inflation going up 8% plus, if you're breaking even, you're doing good. And we've still been going down the last few years. You also notice that the chemicals are going up, and they're going to go up again next year. Later on in the commission meeting, we have our, you know, yearly where we update the chemical pricing and who our vendors are. So three out of the four are going in the right direction. We're going to keep those going in the right direction. And the chemicals, we're going to explore ways of using less chemical and keep producing the same quality water. So that's water fund, if anyone has any questions on that. Wastewater fund is the best fund we've got going on our utilities. Everything is going down. The new plant's running great. Every month, we're finding ways to be more and more efficient. Bio solids have been huge this year. We've taken it to the farm fields instead of to the landfill. Saved over $100,000 compared to the last two years. So that's been a great, great move. I know I brought that to you guys about a year and a half ago to do that. That's been working out. You see, our other O&amp;M is breaking about even, like I said, over three years with inflation. That's pretty good. Labor's going down. We're finally at the staffing, the appropriate staffing, we think, with the new plant. So we've shed a couple of the operators from going 24/7, around the clock. We've, after the plant's been done, we felt we didn't need two management positions out there. We're down to one. We feel we're in a good position now to stabilize that labor and benefits for the long term with our staff. And then utilities, you can see that the plant went online all the way to the left, and they've been figuring out how to, even with costs going up on our utilities, we're still, they're figuring out how to use less energy, less natural gas, less water to get the same results. So are there any questions on the wastewater? Stormwater, I don't have as much on that. There is a lot of uncertainty. As you see on there, there's a big potential capital that, as you know, from going to the community action committees and our community outreach on there, that may not even be touch, tip of the iceberg. So stormwater, operating fund-wise, we are still going down on our labor, our benefits. We're being more efficient on everything. We're still trying to fix a lot of our infrastructure, catch basins, inspect manholes, starting to get some smaller projects going on with that each year to repair the worst of them. And like I said, that's a great unknown coming up in the next year on the, what we have to do to meet OD and R's requirements. Anything on the stormwater?
Got a question real quick on stormwater. So on the revenue side, it continued to drop. Why is that?
We're pretty even on the revenue.
It looked like it. Is that what was?
The orange is the revenue, so we're going up just a touch. That's that projected 30 cent increase next year. And we do get a couple more businesses and ERUs each year. It's not a lot, but it is a, we're not going backwards, like with water and sewer, where if people use less water, it's harder to predict. That stormwater is pretty much constant, and if you raise the rates, it will go up a touch.
Am I looking at it wrong, where the orange on the left between, on each bar? So in '19, it was its highest in revenue, and it dropped, dropped, dropped?
Yeah, I think there's some grant money in there from projects back. That's why I said, you've got to get into the weeds, like Paul was saying, with the book and stuff. This is high level and a little deceptive sometimes where if you have grant money coming in or donations or...
I just know we didn't change the rates or anything.
No, it hasn't. So if you did buy the money raised from ERUs, that would be the same for all those four years. But there was some extra money during projects where we got matching money and stuff like that.
Got it. Thanks.
And then one last thing, as Paul was alluding to, the zero-based budgeting, this is a first stab at utilities, KPIs. So this is kind of some of the things we look at, at revenue, people, debt service, water main breaks, miles clean, manholes clean. So what Paul's talking about with our work order system would work up into these KPIs. So this is something that I'm hoping that when we get a little more, get our GIS going and our work order system going, we could capture the monetary and the hours going into these water main breaks, these manhole cleanings, the biosolids removal at the wastewater plant, stuff like that, to get into a little more depth. So that's a little preview of what Paul was talking about, how we're looking to go in the future.
And you'll be reviewing that with the utility board at some point?
Yeah, we review these with the utility board every quarter. All these stats, I would go over them quickly. We send them out. When I update them, you know, periodically through the year, we send them out to the board. I sent you an email the other day with some updates, so it's been a good. The utility board's been good, get some feedback from the citizens. And that's all I have for the utilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think we're moving on to the sanitation fund. So overall, the sanitation fund has been very stable over the last 10 years or so. We, you did all approve the new rate structure at the last commission meeting, so we'll be instituting that for 2023 and really seeing what that does to our revenue stream. But typically, year over year, our revenue does cover our expenditures. We are looking at 2023, a small capital project of upgrading our technology. So we're looking to have in cab hardware and software for our collection vehicles with routing software. So we're really hoping that having a good routing system will help with our efficiencies, also help when we have staffing issues so we could backfill those positions with basically anyone in the city, and that they would know where to go. Our big issue has been, you know, our routes can be pretty complicated. And so having someone fill in in the department is very difficult because they don't know where to go. So that will help us greatly. Also, in 2023, we will continue with our cart replacement.
Sorry, we lost our screens. They just came back up.
Okay. I thought we lost Kayzie there. Sorry.
Sorry, I need to plug this in. I apologize.
So we, every year, budget some funding to replace carts. Our recycling carts in particular are coming up on eight years old, I believe, eight years old. So we are seeing some wear and tear that we will continue to have to make some replacements and repairs there. We will also be, and we are working on the switch to the NISC software with the utility billing office, and we expect to be utilizing that greatly in 2023 as a communication mechanism with the customers. Any questions on sanitation?
I think it's good to point out, looking at the revenues, I know we made some adjustments to some of the fee schedules, but concerns with rates and such. I mean, the revenues are staying pretty flat, so you can see there wasn't a major change in actual, like, rates, which some people might have made assumptions of. Sorry?
Yeah. Yes. And we will, you know, monitor that into next year as we make the switchovers with the rates and the fees. So we'll be watching that closely. We do have a very healthy fund balance in sanitation, so we'll be watching that into the future. We do anticipate some, you know, we always have to plan for our capital needs into the future.
And that's what I was going to ask, just for 2023 budget, with having more expenses than revenues, we are still doing well with our fund balance?
Yes, yes. And I honestly don't anticipate that we will have to dip into reserves. I think there was some unknowns, you know, on costs, but we typically come in under budget, so I think we'll still be good even in '23.
Awesome.
Amy, what happened to the project of building a sanitation?
Yeah.
Building?
Yeah, so we've looked, over the last couple of years, we kind of made the decision that we really needed to be smart about any building that we were going to do. And several other of the departments need housing as well. Underground, as you know, is renting. Public Works is outgrowing their facility, and there's likely some interest in the Public Works facility. So we're looking at, in the future, potential for multiple departments going into one facility. And Chris Schmiesing has been working on looking at some potentials for some reuse of other buildings that may be coming vacant. Also, we, it's not off the table that we might build, but we're trying to be very thoughtful about what that looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is golf. And in 2022 and 2023, we are making some significant investments into that facility. The course and the facilities out there. There hasn't been a lot of investment probably in the last five to 10 years, so there was some need. In 2022, we invested in a new POS system, which has been amazing. That allows us the opportunity to have online tee times, to track all of our expenditures and revenues, and we will have much better data in terms of use of the facility. We stood up a new website. We did some security upgrades. We did the remodel to the clubhouse. And we did a temporary fix to the drainage issue that we were having out there that was limiting the number of days the course could actually be open. So we accomplished all of that. 2023, we're looking to continue on some of that. We are looking at, and I'll be bringing this to you hopefully yet this year, working with a third-party administrator for the course. We're looking at really capitalizing on a partner that understands the golf industry and how to get the course into a better financial position. We would like the course to be more of a balanced budget. I think ever since the course, we've had the course, it has been in the red. And so the city's general fund does support the operation of the course. So our goal moving forward, working with our third-party administrator, is to get that into a more balanced position. And strategies that we are looking at to be able to do that is making sure that the fees at the course are competitive. And you all, again, I brought that to you last meeting for approval. So we'll be looking at making those upgrades next year. We'll definitely be looking at continuing with a marketing strategy. We started that this year, certainly want to do more of that into next year. And also looking at new revenue sources. The one capital project for 2023 is continuing to work a permanent solution for the drainage issues at the course.
What would be an example of new revenue for the golf course?
So we've talked about a couple of things. There, the clubhouse, since we've done the renovation, there could be a potential to utilize the space in the wintertime for rental opportunity. Since we did make the investment into the clubhouse, it's typically closed in the winter with no usage. We've also talked about potential for the driving range and looking at, it's called top tracer technology, which is kind of like the top golf mentality where you, you know, you have computers at the site where you can play games and do different things. So that's an opportunity we're looking at. Just kind of thinking outside the box a little bit, and also looking at opportunities to bring non-golfers to the course. So having some family fun night kind of things where we can bring in people that maybe haven't been to the course and just looking at opportunities that might be out there.
I have a question. With the revenues, it looked like they dropped pretty much over this year. Was that due to, I know we opened up a little bit late, but it doesn't look like it's gained much more in 2023 expected. Is it just dropping in the clientele or?
Yeah, well, for 2023, we typically try to be a little conservative on our estimates.
That's significant. It's like 100,000.
Uh, revenue.
I'll chime in real quick, Amy. That's actually two, so 2022 is a budgeted number as well. So that was the approved budget for 2022. Essentially, our revenues have slightly increased from that number, but we don't have the actuals listed on there. We wanted to validate it with a '22 budget and a '23 budget. So the revenues for the golf course are slightly up from that budgeted number. They are a little lower than '21's actuals.
Yeah, and that's why I was just kind of curious is why we were expecting such a significant drop from 2021 for this year and next year?
Yeah, you know, '21, I think we were... Yeah. You know, '21, I think we were still seeing the COVID bounce a bit. Rounds of play were significantly up in '20 and '21, you know, even during the weak times, when you wouldn't expect as many golfers, people were not working in '20 and '21, and they were at the golf course. So we did see a significant increase in our revenue those two years. '22, I think, will be a little higher than what is shown there when we get the final numbers.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to go over the street funds with you here briefly. We'll look at the 103 Fund, which is a resurfacing funding that we utilize to resurface the streets on an annual basis. As you know, this year, we didn't spend as much funding as we typically do. We have set up a five-year program over the next five years, starting in '23. And next year, we're looking at spending approximately $1.6 billion versus a typical $750,000 that we normally spend. We're going to increase that funding a little bit next year to catch up, and we will do some different pavement surface treatments on the southwest end of town, looking at doing some micro-surfacing, some Cape Seal work, having some rejuvenator put placed on some of the most recent paved streets, along with crack sealing some of those roadways as well. So that's some work that we'll be looking at having done in '23. And then we'll continue that same work in '24, '25, '26, and '27, looking at spending approximately $750,000 annually after that.
And this is money coming, this fund is basically the tax?
This is from the income tax fund, yes.
What's the big difference between '22's revenue and '23's anticipated revenue?
The major difference in those two years' revenues are Ohio Department of Transportation grants.
So is it pretty standard, like, on the budget side of it, you don't really include in the budget until we know that we secure them? Or do you list as anticipated?
Once a grant is awarded and secured, that is when it is included in revenues in our budgeted numbers for finance.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll move on to the 101 Street Fund. This is a street maintenance fund. You can see that our revenues are projected around $3.1 million in our expenses. We're looking at $3.8 million. The reason for the increase in our expenses, we have a few larger projects that'll be one-time projects that we'll be looking at doing in 2023. One project is a project at Main and High Street. Intersection improvements would be about $300,000. That would be putting bump outs along the sidewalks in those areas, removing the delineators that are downtown right now and the flowerpots that are in the middle of the roadway. This will help with the traffic flow through the downtown, hopefully help discourage the larger trucks and semis that are driving through our downtown, and just give that area a better look. Another thing that we, another area that we're looking at proposing is possibly flipping the direction of traffic off of Market Street, so that Market Street does not dump out into Main Street right next to High Street. That is too much traffic dumping out into a major thoroughfare within 40 feet of each other. So to alleviate that issue, if we flip the, simply flip the traffic flow and make traffic flow the opposite direction into Wayne Street, which is a much lower volume, it will fix a lot of the problems that we currently have. With traffic trying to cross off of Market Street into the quad across the street when those delineators aren't there, people really try, they're trying, they increase their speed, then you run into problems with people trying to back out of the quad, you know, accidents that occur on a regular basis. We just want to try to avoid all that, so we could simply do that by flipping the traffic the opposite way. So that's one large project that will take up some of that cost. Another item, we've had to roll over a new plow truck that you all approved back in September of 2021. We do not anticipate seeing that until February or March of 2023, so we've had to roll over that $180,000, which was previously budgeted into next year's budget. So that helped increase that number as well. There is also a $16,000 trailer that we had, we had to move that funding over into next year, because it's not anticipated to be delivered until sometime early in '23 as well. Another large project that we'll have next year is building a new salt barn to replace our dilapidated salt barn. It's just, it's exceeded its lifespan. We'll be looking at spending up to $175,000 on a new buy span salt barn.
And I think that appeared in the capital improvement budget as well?
Correct. Yes.
Moving on, looking at kind of the general fund budget overview, you can see that the general fund area kind of includes parks, safety, or police and fire, as well as the Fort Pickwa Plaza and other minor general fund areas, including things such as the mausoleum. We will go a little bit into detail, but this next slide, we wanted to present to you as well, to kind of give you an update on income tax revenues. It's kind of remained pretty constant. We had a bump up in '21, but those are estimated for '22 and '23. As you all are aware, we have switched to the Regional Income Tax Agency. We've gotten some good feedback from people when, in terms of user friendliness, going out and playing around on the website. We've gotten some training going on in our finance department to help citizens as well. I will be transparent with you and state that October, we went live, and our first payment, because now we're going to be a month behind from getting it from RITA until it catches up, they posted additional days a little later, so our October number that we received in November was a little down, but we have all spoken, and we anticipate to gain that back in November. We also anticipate that RITA has better income tax collections and transparencies, and can work with the State of Ohio and Attorney General's Office. So we think that some of our delinquent abilities within the finance department over the years, and the ability to collect and have that oomph, if you will, behind us, is going to be picked back up through RITA over the coming years. That is our hope and our goal, to provide additional income for us. This slide is kind of just to represent what the appropriation number for our general fund is broke out, whether it's city building, city commission, over different departments of planning and zoning, human resources. This is just kind of to give you an overall picture of how that looks. And of course, you can see that our general fund is mainly in part transfers out to other funds. Again, just kind of looking at it the way we've looked at other funds over the past five years. We've got '19, '20, '21 actuals, and then again, the budgets for '22 and ' '23. As you can see, and based off of some of Paul's indications at the beginning of this presentation, our expenses, except for in 2020, have pretty much outweighed revenues coming into the general fund. Therefore, we do know that the fund balance is lowering, but that's why we've taken a very hard dive and specific look into where should we put these exact expenditures, what's important for the city of Pickwa. But just to be transparent, that we are working to bring down that fund balance. And of course, there will be changes. Again, most departments do budget higher than what they actually spend, so transfers may change. Even between now and for the end of '22, we worked diligently to close POs and make sure that we're purposing the money and allocating it out where it needs to be. And if it's not being spent, the fund balance remains. But just to point that out for you.
Do this one? Okay. Good evening again. Just to talk specifically about some of the general fund areas. In regards to parks, 2022 and 2023, we really started to look at a focus on maintenance, not really looking to build many new things, but just try to maintain the facilities and things that we currently have. If you look at '22 and '23, the large amount of capital and then the increase that you see in revenue are related to grants. So this is showing grant money coming in and then going out as capital expenditures, mainly related to the Loc 9 project. So if you take that project out, 2022 and 2023 are very similar to what we've typically seen in the past. For 2023, in addition to looking at the Loc 9 project, a couple of capital expenditures, we're looking to resurface some parking lots. And also, we had started this year looking at ADA compliance for our moat park restrooms and potentially some other areas that we know we need to focus on compliance with the ADA. Other than that, parks would remain pretty stable, about the same as it typically is.
Any money in the budget to look at possible renovations at the Hans Pavilion?
We did have that as the capital expenditure project. It's in the capital programming. I don't know, you know, that it's going to be funded. I know that the capital funding is going to be very tight for the next couple of years. We do still have some thoughts of updating our analysis on the Hans Pavilion. You know, last year, we did invest in an assessment on the Hans Pavilion, so we are looking at potentially upgrading, and just making sure that's still up to date in terms of what would the cost be for the Hans Pavilion.
So that didn't occur in '22, and we're anticipating that it will occur in '23, the new updated study?
Yeah, we've contacted them. It's kind of on the, we're waiting on the timeframe from the architect. But yes, we, it should either be yet this year or potentially next year.
And this fund would be paying for that?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Next is, if we're ready to move on, for the fire department. A couple of things that we have, that we still have going on in our capital funds for this year, that will carry over for our '23 budget request, is we have a FEMA grant application in for air packs. They are going to be end of life about the middle of 2024, so we're trying to be forward-thinking and looking at trying to do the replacement on that. We have the application in earlier this year with Hurricane Ian. All FEMA people are down in Florida right now, so they put a pause on the releases of that. So we'll continue to watch that. If that does not come to fruition, we will reapply in '23. It is in the capital budget for that. The other item that's in there is the state capital grant that we received for the burn building out at the old water treatment facility. Progress is happening on that. We have the foundation in. We have it on schedule for approximately late spring, where the company will come in and actually do the erecting of the facility out there. So we're looking very forward to that. Assistant Chief Reisner was in the audience, and firefighter Eric Wood, I give credit to them. In 2016, they had the vision on that to try to repurpose that facility. So there's a lot of things that we still have going on out there and trying to repurpose that. So those are, those are some of the great things. Looking forward into '23, we're running into the same thing with looking at vehicles in the capital and the projections of what goes on. So I was just on the phone today with, we have an ambulance, it's a 2004 model that we're looking to try to replace, and we're going to run into the same thing that Ed and Brian have. It's probably 2025 before we would be able to get one in from, if it's ordered in '23. I talked to Jennifer, and we're talking about letters of intent versus creating purchase orders and keeping those on the books. So the companies that are on state bid are willing to do letters of intent versus trying to create purchase orders on that. So about anything in our realm fire-wise, it's out there as well as anything else. So one of the challenges that we have coming up in next year is, is we've got a handful of retirements that I believe are going to happen. So with police and fire, recruiting, retention, and things like that, those are some of the key situations we run into with that. So we're, we have a civil service meeting coming up tomorrow, but we're also looking at doing a testing process ourselves in early 2023. So right now, our staffing, we're down one, and so we'll work on that process to bring in some fine young people. Another bright thing is, is I continue to get feedback from our hospital systems, and I also see it on a daily basis, but they are, they don't want to, you know, throw out names of other departments and that, but they're saying how top-notch the staff is that we have over here and what they do. And so I see it every day. The folks do amazing things out there. So I continue to sing their praises anytime I get a chance to. So.
All kinds of praises. It gives you a wonderful job.
Yeah. It's amazing to see. Chris and I had been on scenes together as police and fire years ago, and some of the things that happened are just amazing to watch of what goes on. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If not, I'll pass the baton over to.
Just real quick, the ladder truck.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Are, did you put out for the grant for that again?
I did not, but it can be put in for the FEMA in the next round to do that when that opens up, and it's in the CIP.
Yep.
We continue to look for those ways.
We know that's needed. Trust me.
It's a, it's a difficult thing.
It is.
You know, it's very difficult with what those expenses are on it, and there's not really an easy way to say, can you find a ladder truck that'll do the purposes that we need to for less than a million dollars? It's just not possible. So.
Well, thank you for all you're doing with.
So why didn't we put in for it again?
In the, in the last one, we, we had put in for it for three years in a row, and we did not get a successful award on it. And we have the air packs that are, they've scored, you know, real high in the priority when it was reviewed by the first time through in that. And so in discussion that we had, it was like, let's, let's take a pause on that and put our concentration in to, you know, put in a good grant application for the air packs. I'm not sure I wanted to muddy the waters by trying to put in too many grant applications in for the AFG, because I'm not sure how they look at that when that all comes in. If you're just trying to put a wish list out there, and then you dilute down what you're asking for. But we definitely want to get, get the air packs taken care of, and depending on what that award comes. But they do allow that process to put in for vehicles, and then it's safety equipment on a separate one, and we can certainly try it again. Ladder trucks are difficult to get to award it.
Oh, I know. That'd sound like the one we were pretty close. I'd hate.
The first time through.
I'd hate to lose an opportunity.
Yeah, the first time. It was, it was close. It had to have been close, because we were, received the letter in the last, you know, out of the last awards, we received the turn down letter.
I guess my concern is just kind of going back to like what the CIP.
I guess my concern is just kind of going back to like what the CIP, what are we doing in the meantime? Are we solely relying on this grant? And then if we're not even applying for it, or are we setting money aside every year, so $100,000 every year towards, in 10 years, can we buy? Like, what are the actions we're actually taking to try to get to it?
Yeah. So far, I don't believe there's a process where there's been money thought about or dedicated to set a little bit aside each year.
I know we talked about it in the past. That's all I'm trying to figure out, is what action are we doing? I don't want to just say, hey, we can't get this grant, and that's our answer, especially if we're not applying for it.
Yeah.
I can answer that if you'd like, Commissioner.
Sure.
So next year, we're going to start both a fleet capital project and a facilities capital project that'll be teamed by our leadership team. And we're going to have a general services director that's going to oversee that. And as part of that, with a fleet program, you're going to have service lives for every, you know, bit of our rolling stock. But also, too, is we want to move towards a fleet CIP account, if you will, which would be basically adding money to the account year over year. You'll have years you spend a lot and years you don't, but you're still funding it at the appropriate level. So when we have the big expenditures, you're not hustling to shake the couch cushions to come up with the funds. So that'll be in place, not only for, you know, you look at items like the ladder truck, but also Vector Jet, you know, a lot of the expensive equipment that we have. Instead of waiting and then budgeting for it one year, we should be knowing when that's going to happen and have the resources allocated along the way.
Which I appreciate that. I understand that's still good, like a ladder truck is kind of that exceptional item due to its expenses, too. So, you know, how are we doing that, and what's our ETA, what's our plan? And I know trying to put that program together, but that's still taking time, and I know that's been a topic for many years now, too. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. As you can see up there, most of our budget is manpower, given the nature of our work. And when you look at our capital expenses, it's our traditional replacement of our cruisers, the rotation for it, and we're due for three this year. And we, as you already know, we ordered three of them a few months ago to come in. As far as our upfitting of those cars, there's a small increase on that. We're going to try to update some equipment that's inside the car, such as they'll have the capability to actually print the citations versus writing them out. And efficiency-wise, it's an improvement, but also it's cheaper to do it that way, too.
It is.
So the traffic citation, multiple copies, is like a dollar forty to take it out, and that'd be, it's free because the county provides the paper, so. So that's an improvement, but the other capital items that we put in for, other than the cars, is again, just to replace some equipment within the Department for Safety, equipment for each officer and the tactical team. It's, seems like an insignificant, excuse me, insignificant number, but it's actually pretty important equipment. So back to the labor part of it, as you're aware, we had four openings. We just recently offered two positions to some solid candidates that we can maybe onboard here relatively quick. And then we have two openings with the expectation of three retirements next year, two to three. So the recruitment is going to be ongoing, and it's showing some promise, it's just going to take some time. So again, other than the small capital items, it's just our labor and benefits.
And according to the newspaper, we're not the only community that is going through the recruitment process.
Right, and every community's going through it, and everyone's having the same challenge. And the academies typically, there's one or two candidates within an academy that have a job already while they're going through it. Now, it's generally one or two that don't have jobs, and those aren't generally the ones you want. So it's a challenge with that. And to that point, we had a meeting today where Troy actually indicated they were losing an officer, and it was good to see somebody else is having those problems rather than us.
Sold the paper.
So, any other questions?
Now, keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
Did wake me up the other morning, but you did a good job doing it. It wasn't you, but somebody had hit a car two houses down from me. The guys were out there, had it cleaned up within a half hour. It was excellent.
Yeah, and anybody that's seen the crash at Spring High, that wasn't us.
That's good. That's good.
Wasn't us.
Thank you.
Just briefly looking at the plaza fund, I'll let Chris jump in. I just want to say this is kind of some things that are up in the year, too, in terms of trying to generate some revenue sources, like Amy was speaking about with golf. How do we, how do we market the plaza better to run out this space? How do we get people in there to have 200 weddings in a year? How do we better advertise ourselves? What's the best utilization of that space? And I know Chris will dive into what's really important there. I think one thing to mention about the plaza is there are some repairs and maintenance that have been kind of chipping away at expenses, and we're trying to overhaul and get ahead of all of that before it becomes more of a bigger problem. But that's just kind of a summary of why you see kind of a significant change in some of the things in the plaza go on into 2023. We're just really trying to prepare for the betterment and betterment of the usage of the plaza. But Chris, I'll let you add anything additional.
Good evening, Commissioner. As Jennifer was indicating, you know, the plaza is coming up on 15 years old since it was renovated, and it's a very large structure. Its historic construction qualities also make it a rather inefficient structure, so it costs a lot to operate to begin with. You can see from the graph, the revenues are just now creeping back close to where they were pre-COVID, but we haven't really fully rebounded on the revenue side. Couple that with, you know, the city has been asked to operate the banquet center and this facility by way of the original funding structure that was put in place. It was after the tax credits burned off, it was, the city was looked to become the owner, operator of the facility. And, you know, we're effectively operating a banquet center or performing a service that isn't really in our wheelhouse. And so one of the things, as Jennifer alluded to, that we're looking at is, how can we better operate that facility, partner with a management group who can bring to bear the kind of expertise necessary to really make sure we're optimizing utilization of the banquet center, getting the full amount of revenue out of that space that it has the potential to produce? And then looking in partnership with them, taking a look at things like the fee structure, the marketing strategy, and all those things that go into making a venue like that successful. Along with that goes the current lease structure. We have the library leasing the basement, first and second and third floors. The third floor is, as you may know, is not finished. It's served as an archive space for the first 15 years. Those are great artifacts to retain and keep for the sake of preserving our community's history, but that's a pretty prime piece of real estate on the third floor. So looking at how can that space be better utilized, how can we partner with the library to find them an alternative location for storage of those artifacts, and then put that third floor to a higher and better use that is a higher revenue generator and better complements the use of the facility overall. So those are some things we're looking at. You can see the operating expense continues to go up significantly, and I think that's a reflection of the, again, we're going on 15 years in terms of the age of the building. Major equipment is starting to fail or need major repairs. This is only going to get worse as we go forward. We're already, we know that the chiller is ending, nearing the end of its life cycle, and that's going to be a million-dollar investment when it comes time to replace that. We had it in the 2023 capital, but the funds simply are not there, so we've punted to 2024, and we'll continue to call the maintenance vendor when necessary and keep it moving along. But as you can see, what happens then is a result of all that, the revenue's not performing as well as they should, and the operating cost exceeding what they should, we end up subsidizing it with the general fund, with a pretty significant sum of money. So working forward, looking at how we can put together a preservation, equipment replacement strategy, so that, as Paul mentioned, like with the fleet, we can start budgeting incremental amounts each year so that we can pick those things off as they come up over the next five, 10 years, as that equipment continues to age and the renovation improvements continue to weather, and have a, you know, more methodical approach to having those funds set aside so that we can deal with those things as they arise. And by working with a management group aimed towards increasing those revenues, and really, not only the revenues, but help that facility perform at its peak level so that it can be the landmark destination in our community and drive the type of traffic on our public sidewalks that benefit our other downtown merchants and business owners, as you would hope something of that nature would. So that's getting a little deeper into the weeds as compared to what Jennifer was mentioning, but I think that covers everything, I think, in my notes. Any questions, I'm happy to respond to.
Do I understand that the request for the library to vacate the third floor is a revenue-generating idea?
Yeah, it's a mutual interest. So it's, it helps alleviate their lease payment by lessening the amount of area they're occupying. Is it really where they want to spend their funding sources? And they're vacating it, then it becomes something that, okay, if we build this out to be X, Y, or Z, and whatever that use is, we don't know, there's a lot of things it could be, but going through the market analysis to figure out what really makes sense there, and then building out a pro forma so that if you invest X dollars in the build-out, how do you recapture that? And then moving forward, how does it become a revenue source as opposed to an expense?
So it's not a health-related issue, it's a revenue-related issue?
Yeah, it's not a health issue at all. It's, yeah, it's to better utilize the space and create a revenue source from that facility.
And do I understand that most of those artifacts are owned by the Pickwa City Schools?
It's my understanding that the school district is in need the owner of all those artifacts by way of their doctrine with the library board and their role of governance over that body.
Right, right. Okay, because I, okay, yeah. So I know there's some things looking at just what to do with those, because obviously we want to keep them and put them in some type of facility where citizens can see them. I luckily enough went with my son in third grade when they did the downtown city tour and was able to get up on that floor, and there's some really amazing artifacts up there that it would be great if we could find a place that it would be open to the public, that people could see them and understand a little more of the history of our community. So, yeah.
Agreed. It would be fantastic to be able to display them publicly, i.e. in the form of a museum. But the one caveat is museums are very difficult to operate without subsidies.
Right.
You know, we don't want to exacerbate the problem, but working with the school district to find a suitable location for those items until we can come up with a more grand solution.
And they can be open a Saturday a month or something like that with volunteers or something.
Collaborating with Upper Valley Career Center, they have the Garberry Ridge facility, not, Willbrook, yeah, the building's out there. Maybe there's some space where some of it could locate there, and that could be open to the public more often, or, you know, whatever. I think it's thinking of all those options and figuring out what makes sense.
Well, I could see the third floor becoming a destination point for people that are here to enjoy the bike path, spend the weekend.
Absolutely. I mean, the banquet center is a, you know, it's a destination in and of itself. It's, to me, it's the premier event space in the Miami Valley region. And so if you can do something with the third floor, perhaps it's got some hospitality component. There's, you know, the Airbnb concept where there's really not a lot of overhead in terms of somebody manning a desk. So you've got the electronic key system, and now you've got some suites or spaces for wedding parties to be able to stay right there on the facility, and/or there could be a dining space. One thing that the restaurant facility down below really has always lacked is it doesn't have a private space for small parties or, you know, functions like that. So maybe you can do something like that on the third floor in conjunction with those hospitality spaces, or maybe, you know, maybe it's better suited to be professional office spaces, and, you know, it draws an attractive lease rate because it's great space overlooking the town square. So those are all the things we need to look at in concert with a consultant who can really help us understand the market dynamics and what would perform the best there.
That's really exciting, because it is, it's a very unique space. Again, with old buildings like that, you just can't recreate that architecture, and you think about the old hotel rooms, which is what it was originally, however many years ago. And, yeah, whether it's an office space or a boutique hotel with, you know, and wedding parties can stay there, and it's a, you know, for people who want to get married, then they're on-site for everything. They could do the rehearsal dinner and everything there and not have to leave. And that's very attractive for many couples, so.
We think it could be. So it's something we'll look at, and I'll bring that back to you.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And just kind of to wrap up our work session about the budget, a couple of factors that I want to toss out for you all to think about. You've all received your budget books. If you have not picked it up, it is in the administrative office to review. Stacy and I and the rest of the finance department are happy to take questions, phone calls, set up meetings with you and any of your constituents if you want to dive further. One thing, again, touching base with what Paul and I have already expressed, with the economic downturns and things that are kind of working against many municipalities in the coming years, focusing on maintaining and stabilizing our workforce as well as appreciating staff that works hard for us every day within all departments is something that will be talked about, I believe, a little later in executive session. And all of those things that we, that will be discussed have been attributed within this budget already, so those numbers are included. Another thing I would like to point out is that the revenue generations that we keep talking about with a couple of these different facilities, I think that's very important for all of us to be involved as a community, as staff, to help that out, because if we can uptick those revenue lines in some of these funds that we see the expenses are overpowering, that's only going to help us as a city to then help bring in more businesses, help the development further. And so we just ask for everybody's support in doing so, but we're happy to take questions. We're happy to review things and take questions at a later date. We're always available. But we do thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some questions, more on a detailed line item, so I'll set up some time, but I understand that now's not the time to get into that.
No problem.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The regularly scheduled city commission meeting will begin. I think it's six o'clock, a little bit after. Will we all stand, please, and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gressom?
Here.
Commissioner Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Better?
Here.
We will now adjourn to executive session. I will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
It's a real roll call.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gressom?
Aye.
Commissioner Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Better?
Aye.